Also in your package, you should have received a copy of our latest check register. If you can indicate if you received that register. Thank you. Under public comments, the first to sign up is Mr. Steven Price.
I read over the weekend in the news graphic about your intention to study and probably expand Georgetown Municipal Water and Sewer Service. And as you may have read in the paper, I have been the subject of scrutiny and action taken by the Georgetown Code Enforcement Office because of my preference for dry management of home septic waste and my preference for sky-clean, untreated roof water as opposed to both of your services rendered by Georgetown Municipal Water and Sewer Service, that is, removal of septic waste and supply of treated, piped, pressurized water. If you look at the history of Georgetown, mainly in Bevins' book, Bevins, who else? The other two, three historians wrote a book on the history of Scott County, and Bevins was one of them. The other two names escaped me. If you look at the history of Scott County, of Georgetown specifically, you can easily see that pipeline water was an east coast innovation imposed upon Georgetown by so-called health authorities in Frankfurt. Until that happened, everybody in Georgetown was content to drink roof water. I'm still content to drink roof water, and I think you should consider roof water as an asset worth cultivating, preserving, and exploiting. At every structure in Scott County, I mean in Georgetown, in your, Scott County too, for that matter, every structure which has a roof is an automatic catch basin for sky-clean, untreated, probably the safest water a person can drink today, given conditions of groundwater The paperwork I gave you refers to the other service rendered by your Georgetown Municipal Water and Sewer Service, that of removing septic waste. And I touch on that paperwork, and that paperwork I handed you touches on the almost worldwide recognized value of home excreta as fertilizer, as an asset, rather than something to be whisked away and feared and then ultimately treated and then ultimately deposited in the landfill at great cost, at great risk to all the travelers on the road who face those trucks hauling the sewage sludge, and apparently at great cost to the quality of the air in northern Scott County because of the odor, which is now emanating from the landfill to which the sewage sludge is trucked, which odor has been the subject of huge complaint. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list for public comment is Ms. Bridget Foster.
She is the Director of our Georgetown Cancer Center. So we are coming today, I'm with Georgetown Community Hospital, no majority of you, but I am coming to request the approval of the Third Colors of Cancer 5K. We are requesting it to be on Saturday, August 17th of 2019, at the same times that we have in the previous years, would be from around 7:00 AM till 11:00. I believe that Tracy has supplied that information with you all in your packets in front of you.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion's been made for approval and seconded. Any questions for Bridget? It's a great cause and a great race. After we got the first year all straightened out.
That's right. Nothing happened last year, it was all squared away last year, so I think we've got an old machine now.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good luck with your event.
Thank you.
Let's see, that's everyone that had signed up for public comment. Is there anyone else that'd like to attest to council? Okay, just a couple of quick mayor's comments. First off, what an absolutely wonderful run the Scott County Cardinal Boys team had. Even yesterday was a great game, but just came up a little bit short. Awfully proud of their record, and of course, the girls start play Wednesday, so just want to give them our best.
Mayor, we will do something if after the girls finish up and recognize that two teams could get in this year. I think it's very important that not just the city represented, the county, we all support that team so much, so.
And we'll, when there's been enough time and we know the outcome of the girls tournament, we'll put something like that together. Also, just a reminder about, you still have time if you choose to do so on your revenue forecast. Stacy would like to report the results of what she does get, again, in aggregate at our next council meeting. So if she could get those revenue projections by the Friday prior to our next council meeting, then she can include your totals in her aggregate numbers. And also, some of you may have noticed or heard about the little cave-in or sinkhole that we had down in front of the Justice Center, right beside the Justice Center, kind of in front. I think we had all kinds of media attention to it because it was a sinkhole, and the local zoo kind of was recently in the news for a sinkhole.
They had a lot of that.
I can tell you, we don't have any Corvettes down in our center.
No.
But it's clear it's where a pipe was attached to a storm sewer box, and it's either leaked or failed, and it's washed away. And this little cavity's about 10 to 12 feet deep, so.
Wow.
Deeper than we want to go down in a trench with our employees, so we actually contracted it out to Derringer Contracting, since they have the equipment and the safety standards to get down that deep. So if you hear about it, it is true, it's covered up with the big steel plate nail, and they were working on it today.
Right there, right there.
And that is all of the mayor's comments. I know. Hey, the over-under tonight is 40 minutes.
Jack, you make it quick. Step on it.
Would you have a bet, and you just cut your comments short so you could win?
It's one of the benefits of sitting in this chair. Oh, gosh. Well, with that said, item seven on your agenda, moving right along, is Mr. Connor with a contract for property in Lanes Run Business Park.
Yes, sir.
Glad to see this.
I'll try, I'll try to do it brevity also, but I'm not too sure I can do that, Mayor. Jack Connor representing Scott County United, your economic development group. You have some maps in front of you, but I'm pleased tonight to present, I'll do here in just about a moment or two, present another contract to the city for some additional purchase of property at Lanes Run Business Park. So with that officially said, let me present to the mayor a check. Thank you. If you look at your maps, this contract is for 4.3 plus or minus acres. It's at the, what I would consider the northwest corner of Corporate and Endeavor. On the smaller map, you'll notice that there are actually three partials that are noted. The first one, which is the smaller one located at the corner, is owned by A1 Sheet Metal. That property was sold to them, in fact, it was actually sold to another individual by us, so the city's already closed and received the money on that. The 4.3 plus or minus acres are the additional property to the west of that. So this involves somewhere in the neighborhood of about seven acres totally. The contract which I handed to the mayor is between the Bristol Group, which is a construction development company out of Lexington, and the City of Georgetown through the Business Park Authority. So the contract is a little, it's not vague, but the point of it is, this is what I would consider to be a build, lease, purchase agreement on behalf of a client, which whom I will tell you in just a moment. Bristol Group will actually be building the facility, they will actually then, at the point of a certificate of occupancy, to be issued to a, to the client, to another client. At that point in time, they will sell the property to this client, who will then proceed on. That's the way the process is going to work in this particular client. So the company that will be actually purchasing the property from the Bristol Group when finished is called the Bastion Solutions Group. Let me just give you a little bit of heads up about who they are. You will know eventually who they are because they were purchased by a local company. It's a company that was formed in 1952. They actually have offices in Australia, Brazil, Canada, India, Mexico, and Spain. They have a variety or varied history of solution development and implementation, make it very, very simple, highly automated, including mobile robots, automated storage and retrieval systems, what we call AGVs, auto guide vehicles, goods-to-person technology, sortation, and conveyor. Two years ago, the company actually was purchased by Toyota Advanced Logistics. Toyota Advanced Logistics does AGVs and PLCs currently on Carley Drive. They have, the location is Carley Drive, they also have a warehouse where they do some development in Frankfurt. So Bristol Group is going to do the build, they're going to then, at certificate of occupancy, turn it back over to the Bastion Solutions Group, and that I would anticipate been a year or so. The contract, I'm going through some of the contingencies real quickly here in a second, but to clearly understand the process, for our contract, once the preliminary development plan is approved, we will close with the Bristol Group. The property will then be turned over to them, and at the completion, they then will convey to Bastion Solutions the property. So I want to make sure that's totally clear. We've done this before, by the way. There are a couple of, there are a number of contingencies, and let me just kind of read those to you. And Mayor, excuse me, they are on page three and four. As usual, we have a contingency, preliminary development plan approval. That process has already begun, in fact, they'll be foreplanted and zoning in March. The Business Park Authority also approved the project at a meeting Friday morning, so we looked at all the BP-1 design criteria, made sure they met that. I'm going to actually show you an architect's rendering of the project. It's not for publication, but I'm going to give you a copy, one just take a look at, and then I'll take it back from you. The closing is also contingent on two other items that are important as far as I'm concerned from an industrial developments perspective. One, they're going to redo a Phase One, we already have a Phase One environmental done at the park, they want to have an additional one done. They also want to do some geotech work, i.e. the soundings of the property to determine what, what the rock looks like there, all at their cost. The mayor has received a contract with earnest money of $2,150, which is that 4.3 plus or minus acres times $500. And as I've already indicated to you, we did attach the photograph as part of the contingencies. And the other thing was the certificate of occupancy. I gave you a larger map also, to kind of give you a feel, this one here, give you a feel where that property is. The other one's kind of smaller, but as I said, it's a corner of Endeavor and Corporate, and it's a project we've been working on for about three years, so we're really glad to see this one come to fruition. The last comment I would make in terms of the Bastion Solution Group, once the project is complete, currently Toyota Advanced Logistics has about 20 employees in our community. When the project is complete, totally complete, we anticipate those, those to be about 60 jobs, so those are all new. And the last thing I know you're glad to hear, this is not a KBI, this is not an incentive from the state of Kentucky, so this project, it stands on its own without any incentive. If you weren't happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Thank you, Jack, and, Mayor Foster, thank you. Any questions for Jack?
I was going to, if I may, I was going to ask the mayor if, before, if I, if you look across the street there, that 6.3 acre tract there, the mayor is, the mayor and the county judge are very much aware of that project, it was announced last week, and I don't know whether anybody saw it, the mayor certainly did. That's our project, you want to talk about it?
Go ahead.
It's Eco Fiber, that's the project that was announced last Thursday through Kentucky Economic Development Finance Authority for their incentive. It's an Australian company that's industrial hemp, but the beauty of this project, as the mayor well knows, this is not CBD oil, this isn't sav, this is the biotechnology component of what we call black hemp or hemp black. So this is really, the mayor uses this term with Country Boy, and I think this is even going to be more with this particular project, it's going to have a wow factor, it's a wow factor, because we're going to be dealing with the hemp, the fiber in the hemp, and that allows us to go to even higher levels in terms of biotechnology, processing, et cetera. So that's a great project. This project with Bastion is 30,000 square feet for the, for the ware, not the warehouse, the assembly area, the development area, and 10,000 office. The Eco Fiber project will be about 40,000 square feet, so.
The Eco Fiber project, Jack, is, it's just so forward-looking, and it's so perfectly in touch with Secretary, what Commissioner Quarles is working on statewide.
Absolutely.
It's appropriate that we have that activity here. In City Hall, we had to Google what hemp black even means. It's the scientific part of it, the fibers that, you've read about covers for your billfold where they can't scan your credit card through the material. It's this material.
Yes, sir.
Is the stuff that makes those things that can't be scanned for, but it's industrial uses of hemp right here in Georgetown. And the thing that I was going to mention, on the property purchase that we accepted the contract for tonight, that is all Phase One.
Yes, sir.
So all of the proceeds of that sale will go toward reducing our existing debt of the Business Park.
Would you clarify for me, Jack?
Sure.
Is it the 4.3 acres that's being sold, or seven acres?
No. Now, I use that map for the client.
Okay.
The first, right there on the corner is 2.1 acres, it doesn't show us 2.1, but it does on, on the larger map, it shows that, you can barely see it.
Yeah.
So it, it does get complicated, but.
I see.
That property is being purchased by the Bristol Group.
Okay.
From an additional client that we used to have, that's called A1 Sheet Metal.
Okay.
They then will take, they will purchase the other four acres from the city. We will then do a consolidation plat so that all of that 6.4, whatever it actually ends up to be, we don't, we don't know yet, it could be seven acres.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Gotcha.
Which means more money to the city.
Okay, thanks.
Yes.
There are motion for approval?
Motion, Mayor.
Thank you. Motion's been made, seconded. If there are no other questions for Jack, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I got to show you this, you can take this to manage, pass that through. I'm just, I just love. Well, when Jack's worked on one of these locations for about three years.
When it comes together.
I figured out how the parcel can work. It's nice when it comes to the.
When it comes together, it's nice to see that. That's awesome, Jack.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We, we did notice that in the parking lot, it's all Toyotas.
And that's what's in the sinkhole.
Oh.
That's interesting.
Thank you, Jack.
Karen says first. I think I can all correct it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you all very much.
Item eight on the agenda is a series of business items for Georgetown Municipal Water and Sewer Service, and if I could kind of, it's, it's three votes on some fairly expensive work, but all of these projects have to do with either our South Sewer Line Extension, which is, we're committed to. Item B, of course, is the, the most expensive, the design services for the expansion and the design of wastewater plant number one. As I've indicated on several occasions, that is our most pressing infrastructure need in the city. We are currently at 94% hydraulic capacity of wastewater plant one. We must expand it. And the Water Board has worked very quickly with Chase's leadership to go through RFQ processes and scoring processes, to where they've used internal groups to help management reach some of these decisions. So we move forward as quickly as we can with the design work for wastewater plant number one. And then finally, item C, the critical needs analysis and rate study. We have to make sure that our, our existing rate structure is in a position to support the projects that we're identifying in engineering, and it, there are projects other than wastewater plant one, and we want to do this rate sufficiency analysis to make sure that, for the protection of the public and the council, we do this one time thoroughly and not make retreat, repeated trips back to the council. But try, I think that's our philosophy, Chase, is to try and capture as many of the necessary projects as we can that are immediately before us into this rate study, and make sure that we have an adequate rate to support all of those capital projects.
Yes, sir. Well said. This, the, the rate study with the critical needs aspect of it, our, our last long-term planning effort was 1999, and we know how much has changed since then. In order to get a rate study done and any necessary adjustment done between now and our next budget cycle, and we bring that to our board and into the city council for approval, the critical needs analysis is the quickest way we think we can, we can take a look at what needs to happen within that. We're going to be focusing on the next four or five years, and then that study will determine what capital projects need to go in and be accounted for in our, our rate study. So we'll be doing those, the item C, just starting at the bottom, we'll be doing the critical needs analysis and the rate study in order to make that a part of our net, next year's budget. Going back up just to the top, the South Sewer Extension, this portion of the design, it is a contract between the city and Hazen, but this portion was what Georgetown Municipal had committed to pain as a part of our part for the design, and then whatever comes out of contract two, we will be funding that in construction as well. So this is just a, the first item is just a purchase order to reimburse the city for contract two of the design.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion's been made and seconded. Ms. Mitchell, if there are no questions for Chase, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And then just again discussing B and C, items B and C together, we've been talking about the long-term planning efforts, the, the need for that, the, the capacity issues we have within our system, mainly wastewater one, but we're also talking about looking at wastewater two and the collection and conveyance system, and then, and then our rates with the last rate increase being in '07, and the last plan upgrade being in the late 90s. But just to update you on our progress, back in January, we did, to reiterate, we went out for RFQ for both projects. We received four submittals on the treatment plant, two submittals on the rate study. Those were scored internally, and GRW, who's, we have our project team, our project managers and the vice president of GRW here with us tonight, we've worked pretty much since that scoring on identifying a scope, and in that scope is what are the minimum needs, what do we exactly do we need line by line, what's in your board packets, what effort is going to be required to get these projects done. We sat for many days in a room and just kicked that around as far as what do we need, what do we not need, and, and we've presented that as best we can to you. We also looked at schedule for both projects, the rate study and time to, if approved, to get, get that in for our next fiscal year and, and starting in July, and then the treatment plant as well, just the, the, what's the schedule, what's the quickest we can get this done to alleviate our capacity concerns. Board, we called a special board meeting last Wednesday night, and we discussed, debated, and questioned these contracts for two and a half, three hours, and after which the board considered and unanimously approved both these contracts, so we're here to allow for your consideration. And the team is here, we can have as, as little or as much discussion, as much Q and A as you'd like, but we'll leave that to you and what you'd like to see going forward and.
For the council's understanding, when, when we went through a more lengthy process to hire the engineers for the South Sewer Line project, the reason we gave the council that detailed presentation prior to the selection is that was actually our project. It's the City of Georgetown, it's being done in the City of Georgetown's name. So it was our due diligence on the front end, and we brought all of that detail for your all's consideration. In this case, this is a Georgetown Municipal Water and Sewer Service project, and the Water Board has already done this degree of due diligence on our behalf. That's the difference from your all's point of view. I know we, we, we must go forward in as expeditious a way as we possibly can, and the critical needs analysis, this has got to be sequenced just perfectly, and the fact that you have come to a scope of work and a contract, I'm actually delighted that we're at this point.
Me too, Mayor. I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Motion's been made, and would that be for B and C, Todd?
B and C.
I'll second, Mayor.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve B and C. If there are no questions for Chase or the engineering team, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Do good work.
Will do.
All right, thank you. That's what we want to hear, thank you very much. Item nine on your agenda, two actions from the city engineer, and this is our ongoing process of accepting streets into our street network that have been lagging out there for a long time. The first one is in Main Street Estates, and I think Eddie told me today that that one has been dangling out there since 2006. Eddie just worked with the developer to change some of the curb ramps to a legal height, and so folks are being compliant with this, but we're finally working through these, and in your packet is a municipal order approving dedication of streets in East Main Street Estates and also streets in Stonecrest, and Eddie presents that each of those meet our standards.
May I lump those together and make a motion, Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I do.
Been made.
I'll second.
And seconded for approval of each. If there are no questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item 10 on the agenda is a municipal order approving the purchase of airbags. Chief, are these lift, to lift vehicles?
Stabilization equipment used for vehicle extrication and rescue. We did have it in our budget, I think it went over like 200 and some dollars, and we'll pull that out of one of our other general accounts.
Sounds good.
I'll make a motion, Mayor.
Motion's been approved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries, thank you, chief.
Thank you all.
Mayor, before you start your comments, could you provide an update on why we don't have the syringe exchange program?
Oh, thank you. I meant to do that in mayor's comment. We had indicated to the council and the public that we would have first reading of the syringe exchange program ordinance tonight. Dr. Miller is out of town, in fact, she's at a conference in, in Washington DC, and since this is a WEDCO initiative, we thought it appropriate that Dr. Miller be here. She's provided a significant amount of local data, but we just thought as a courtesy of Dr. Miller and to acknowledge that it's a WEDCO initiative that we would wait until Dr. Miller got back. Now, I am very proud of the fact that, I know Mark has done some real homework on this. Mark actually took the time as a council member to go to Cynthia and observe the needle exchange program at work, and there's an opportunity for all of us to go do that. It's on Thursdays, and if anybody would like to see that in motion, that's something that can be worked out. Mark, anything you want to add to that, just that you had the experience?
It was an eye-opening experience.
I appreciate you doing the work to go see.
I'm glad I went. I learned quite a bit, and I hope to continue to learn more over the next few weeks until we have our first and second readings, but. That's about all I have.
Okay, thank you. There's opportunities to learn more, and Dr. Miller will be sharing that local data with you, to the extent that we can achieve it. I did talk to William Howke, the CEO of the hospital, he indicated his willingness to appear before the council and express the support of the medical community. medical community for this initiative. The hospital confirmed that it is indeed their stance, and he would be glad to report that in his official capacity at some subsequent meeting. That's why it's not on your agenda for first reading tonight. We're not changing anything about the approach, but we thought it fair for Dr. Miller to be here to take your questions directly rather than me trying to answer them. So with that said, there's seven minutes for council comments, if we make the 40-minute thing. We can be here.
No pressure.
We can be here all night long. Tammy, do you have anything tonight?
I don't, thank you.
Thank you. Karen?
Well, let's see, no. I just would like to praise Judge Covington today for a really good speech. He had a lot to say, and it was very moving. We had a lot of good stuff today, and it was a packed crowd, so chamber launching was very successful.
Didn't he do great?
He did.
He did a great job.
He did. We had a lot of new people join the chamber too, a lot of new businesses, it was pretty great.
Anything else, honey?
No, thank you.
Mayor, I've got a list here I need to read.
All right.
No, I'm just kidding.
You're good.
Actually, I do have a question. Sorry, on my street corner, there are two blue stripes that have been spray painted on, I guess by the city or something.
The gas company.
Gas company.
Is it you, Chase?
Blue is ours.
Oh, it's your, okay. It's on the corner of Kelly and Road. Is that just more like a pipe issue or?
Somebody's called to locate and by State Law, we.
They might be doing some kind of construction or something, you have to know where that line is.
It's right on my street corner, yeah, okay, it's right there. It has like tin out from it, like tin sprayed in, so, okay.
Is that a? Is that private, does that?
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, so blue, okay.
Is that a before you dig thing?
Yes.
So someone that's going, is thinking about disrupting the street.
I was going to say they're going to be digging on it because it's right on my property. They're going to be digging on it. Talk to me about it.
You might ought to pay attention.
I'd like to know.
Anything else?
No.
Just a couple of things, we talked about it earlier, about how well the boys' basketball team at Scott County did. Girls are coming up this week. Also, the Georgetown College ladies left today. Ladies basketball team has gone their way to Montana to play in the national tournament. The men's team find out Wednesday night where they're going to wind up, and they are looking at possibly being overall number one, so.
Wow.
A lot of great athletics going on, so.
Scott County is blessed with a lot of things in this community.
Good stuff. Thank you, Todd. Yes, anything else come forth? Yes, ma'am.
Do you know why Pearls Pike is going to be closed on March, March the 13th? What the state's doing? There's a sign moved in today, and I came to town to.
Haven't heard.
But.
Tell us where.
It's the sign, they put it right above the shop, closer to the intersection, but right above the shop, and it says something about closed on March the 13th.
They're doing a lot of power line work out there.
Yeah, they are doing a lot of power line work.
They're doing a lot of.
Surely law enforcement's been notified.
You might be off of work that day.
So, no, not at all.
No.
But it does, it does kind of cut down on customers getting to me, so I was just wondering that's how it went down and.
It does.
And why? And who? It was, okay.
Can we, can we check that out? Click there.
Debris, there you go.
Oh, yeah. Well, they're talking about what? They're going to be closed that long, man. Thank you, Chief. Thank you.
That interweb thing's pretty handy, isn't it?
Something we bought.
If there's nothing else to come forth, the council will stand adjourned, thank you.
Three minutes, three minutes.
Look at that.
Steve, you need to.